August sixth, two thousand nineteen, City Council meeting to order. And before we begin, I'd like to call on Councilman Ernest Brooks with a special recognition.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. As many of our former council members know that I am a proponent of municipal government and the history of that, and as well for our young people to learn as much as they can about it also. In that vein, I'm sponsoring a city government workshop for youth, for the students from the Quest mentoring program from Jackson State Community College. They are led by Ms. Reeves and Ms. Robin Hicks. And I believe there may be some folks here from Jackson State as they believe they're kind of coming in. And I think some of the young men are here. We would ask them to stand. They're already standing, but more than that, we would like to recognize them. Let's give them a round of applause. And Mayor and Council, this is a program for first-generation African-American male students who are freshmen. And that effort is to retain and support them through their matriculation through Jackson State and hope they go on to our university system. So, we're expecting approximately twenty young men who will attend this City Council meeting. They will tour City Hall, we will come back, have a mock City Council meeting, have a men's luncheon, and we will recognize those young men for their participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Brooks, for your leadership in this program. Now, I would ask Councilman Cisco to lead us in our invocation and Councilman Higgins to lead us in our pledge. Please stand.
This morning, let's have a moment of silence for the people of Texas and Ohio that's going through the ordeal they're going through. And so always keep them in our minds here because this is tragedies families. And so, let's just have a moment of thought, please. I do have to follow, we thank you this day and we thank you for the many blessings that you give to us each day, especially the blessing of life. Lord, we just ask you to continue to be with this country and to be able to help the people that need the help and we can see those that need it and get it for them, Father. We have a lot of hate in this country, but we hope that someday that we can get you in their hearts, Father, that where we can have a peaceful nation. Lord, we ask you to be with this council and mayor this morning as we make decisions that affect the people of the city of Jackson. Help us to do the right thing and help us to always have you in our mind in everything we do. Lord, we love you in Christ and thank you both for your love for our families. And we thank you for Christ's sacrifice. Go with us now and help us do the right things. These things I ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call needed, I think you can mark all the council members as present this morning. Item four is approval of minutes from the July second, two thousand nineteen meeting. You all, the council had a copy of that beforehand. There are no additions or corrections to the minutes. They will be approved as read. We don't have any proclamations, but we do have one more special recognition. If you all are aware of ESPN tournament, the tournament. We had a team from Jackson, Tennessee, the Jackson, Tennessee Underdogs that keep making history.
shook up the world.
And, yeah, shook up the entire basketball world this year and look to do it again next year. So, then we got some of those members here today. If you will, members, come up here and kind of line up so we can recognize you all. We got the small token of our appreciation.
This is the head coach Dexter Williams. I hope you all know him. Coach, if you want to say any words?
First of all, on behalf of, honestly, everybody's not here today. We do have more than three. But they're kind of scattered out across Tennessee, some live in other states and just had other obligations. But on behalf of the team, we most certainly appreciate the recognition today. We don't know how many of you all followed us over the last couple of weeks, but we had a, we had a great run. We finished, we made it to the Elite Eight in the two million dollar tournament. We lost our last Thursday night to a Georgia Eagle, a Marquette alumni, but we fought hard. We entered the tournament at fifty-six seed out of sixty-four, set up just like Mark Magis is. Ended in fifty-six and make it to the Elite Eight. Tremendous accomplishment for these guys in the city of Jackson, Tennessee, and all of us, Tennessee. And we appreciate, I know that it was a huge following. We saw on social media, people having watched parties and, you know, I hope you got to watch and turn your television on on ESPN and see Jackson, Tennessee come across your screen. That was a big deal. And with us finishing like we did this past season, there's a possibility that next year we might get an opportunity to actually host in the city of Jackson. ESPN could be coming, coming this way next year. If that's the case, we most certainly hope you have and support the council. I know some county commissioners are here today. We'll be looking to you all for your support in the chamber because it would take everybody to pull it off. But like I said, on behalf of everybody, we just appreciate the support and we look forward to doing it again next year.
Mayor, if I could very, take a few minutes, I just want to thank these young men. We talking about basketball, but these young men are real role models in our community. All these young men are college graduates, working every day, grew up in this community and we're so proud of the job that they're doing in making the history here right here. And I said that these young men made history out of Liberty High School, some went to Southside, JCM, all through high schools. So, that says a lot about our, our, our community and our schools here in our community. I'd like for us to continue to support this team because, like I said, hopefully that opportunity will come. They will be able to be here, so it's going to take money to support them. So, let's stand behind them and we'd like to say we are proud of y'all guys and we'll continue to support you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Don. Gentlemen, you did Jackson, Tennessee proud. And whatever we can do to support you next year to make sure we host it here in Jackson, we're going to make that happen. All right, item six is invitation for public comment. If there's anyone here interested in speaking on anything on first reading, raise your hand at the time and we'll be recognized to come up here and speak. Item seven is first readings. Consideration of an ordinance to annex a resolution to adopt a plan of service. And three, an ordinance to zone an area referred to as Summit, generally described as being located along forty-three hundred block of US forty-five north, north of Jack Exum Road comprised of ninety-five point five-plus acres. Post zoning for this annexation area are B five highway business district and RS one, single-family residential plan residential development district. I don't recognize Stan to talk about that, to catch my breath.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. You have in your packet the materials pertinent to this annexation. It is a requested annexation. As you well know, the legislature has taken away our ability to annex of our own accord. We can only process those annexations that are by request, and this is requested. It is located on Highway forty-five north, right at the juncture of Highway forty-five bypass and Highway forty-five north. It does, it join the city limits and it is contiguous, so it meets that test. You have in your packet the materials that are related to this annexation. Under state law, we have to have a plan of service for any annexation area. That plan of service requires that we list certain services and how we're going to deliver and when they're going to be delivered. And we have presented that plan of service to the planning commission and then they are recommending it to you. Also, as a part of annexation, we must specify the zoning for the area once it's annexed. And in this particular annexation, you've got three particular pieces of this. And I'll show those to you just so you're, all that mouthful that the mayor said, you can understand. The first part is just cleaning up some right-of-way. So, we're converting a county class along the right-of-way to a city class. It's the same class, but just a county to a city class of B five highway business. There's also a zoning part that affects the front part of this annexation. And this is the area along forty-five as it fronts the highway itself. They're asking that it be zoned B five highway business. And that is basically the zoning class that exists on most of this frontage along here. So, it's in, in alignment with what's already out there. So, this front part would be commercial. And then, the back part of it, which is the main part of the property that's being annexed, is going to be a residential development, what we call a planned residential development or PRD. And they have presented that, that plan to the planning commission in terms of the development plan, the schematic and, and the housing types. And we, we have approved those to the planning commission. So, again, the planning commission has recommended approval of the annexation to you. They are recommending the plan of service and also the zoning associated with the parcels of land that we just described. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Stan, I have a quick question. You haven't received any pushback or any, anything from the neighbors out there?
No, sir.
Move to approve.
Second. I have a motion in second. Stan, do we need, can we take all this in one motion?
You can, as long as you specify in the motion that each thing, that you, you're approving the annexation, that you're approving the plan of service and that you approved the zoning classes that are associated with that annexation.
Councilman Cisco, is that your motion?
Yes.
I have a motion in second. Before we proceed further, this is an item on first reading, so open the public hearing. Is there anyone in opposition to or in favor of this ordinance? Come up here and have a seat and state your name for the record, please.
Mayor, City Council.
Name and then.
I'm sorry, Kent McLemore. And I own this property here and then my family owns the property that fronts right here. We don't have any objection to it. We just want to make sure that all the planting in the stormwater type situations are taken into account. Because even on this property here and with small woods and on the next side of us where Soul Quest has it, there's one drain right there that goes across the road. And when it rains heavy, it's up to the road level. And all that water flows, this property that's going to be developed into residential will flow east toward my family's property over here. So, we just want to make sure those concerns are addressed and that the stormwater is not going to affect those pieces of land when it's approved.
We do address that, the commercial part of it. Of course, we would address the drainage through the site plan development process as they come in for permitting. Once they decide how they're going to develop it, we will review each development and we will review it in terms of stormwater to make sure that they are handling the stormwater produced by the site. We, we follow a policy of zero net increase, which means the residential and the commercial, they cannot produce more runoff than existed prior to development. So, anything that's created by the development must be handled by the development. They can't push any more water onto adjacent properties. So, our engineering department reviews that. And they'll also be required through the construction plating process of the subdivision to submit drainage studies that will show how that, that drainage will be addressed.
Yeah, that's my only concern.
Thanks, Kent.
Thank you.
Anyone else in favor of or opposition to the, the ordinance? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
All right, item two under first readings is consideration of an ordinance to rezone property at sixteen ninety-four Hollywood Drive from OR Office Residential District to OC Office Center District comprising of two point eight acres, more or less.
All right, Mr. Garrett is asking to rezone his property from OR, which is an office class, to an OC, which is another office class. And the only difference is the OC gives some additional uses that would allow him to market his property a little bit better. It, it addresses a zoning class that's already in the area. There's, it's not introducing anything that's not already present. So, he's had a couple of uses that have wanted to do sort of small-scale retail. And the OR really doesn't allow that. It's, it's basically an office class. So, this would allow him to do that. And he, you know, he's capable of meeting the requirements that would be necessary for parking and things of that nature. So, so this planning staff recommended to the planning commission and the planning commission is recommending approval of it to you.
Any questions from council? This is an item on first reading, so open a public hearing. Is there any in favor of or in opposition to? Raise your hand. Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. And do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further questions or discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Item three is consideration of an ordinance to close and abandon a portion of Cooper Anderson Road located at the northeast corner of Cooper Anderson Road and University Parkway.
All right, in your package, you'll see the materials pertinent to this street closure and abandonment. The part that you see in red on the map there represents the old right-of-way. If you're familiar with this area, Cooper Anderson used to make a curve and this was the old alignment of the road. But when residential development was in this area, began to develop, this intersection was realigned. And that old right-of-way is not necessary anymore. It was, it was a holdover from when the area came in from the county. And so, Mr. McAlexander is going to be developing this tract of land into residential. And he wanted to eliminate this right-of-way so that he could develop property to the, to the right-of-way, the existing right-of-way. So, the planning commission is recommending this to you.
Thanks, Stan. Any questions from council? Again, this is a reading on, first reading on this ordinance. So, they're open the public hearing. Is there any in favor of or opposition to? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion. Second.
Have a motion in second? Any further discussion or questions? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Item four under first readings is consideration of an ordinance to amend the official code of the city of Jackson Title twelve, Building Utility, et cetera, codes relative to vacant buildings.
All right, I will, again, you have the materials pertinent to this ordinance and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have concerning it. But I'll give you sort of a brief synopsis of this ordinance and, and then you can proceed with how you want to go. If you want to go into detail line by line, we can. We might be here a while, but we can at least talk about the highlights. As you know, vacant buildings, especially those vacant buildings that are not kept up, that are allowed to deteriorate and, and to cause problems in, in areas, has an effect on property values. It has an effect on the economic vitality of an area. And so, we looked at a lot of different mechanisms and tools for trying to combat vacant buildings where they're not, you know, not being productive, not being a positive impact on either downtown or the surrounding areas in our redevelopment area. And we've looked at anti-neglect, we've looked at, you know, the building code, property maintenance. And, and so, we settled on this tool that you have today. And, and the tool that we're presenting to you is a, is a more streamlined, kind of concise way of bundling the issues that we have into something that someone can follow through systematically. And, and you will be able to accomplish the goals and objectives, which are to have buildings be in productive use and to have buildings that are dilapidated, reach demolition, and, and so the properties can be reused for something more productive. So, I'll start with just kind of giving you the premise of the, of the code. It is within our municipal code. It's under the Building and Utilities Code section of our, of our city code. We're creating a new chapter, which is chapter thirteen, and it's the registration of vacant and commercial industrial buildings. And there's a definition section because with any terms that you use, you want to make sure that you define them so people know what you're talking about. So, there are definitions for, for what is vacant, what is, you know, what is the fire code? What is the person in control? What is the evidence of vacancy? So that everyone is, is comfortable with knowing what we're talking about. And so, it defines vacancy in here and it talks about, you know, buildings that are overgrown. It talks about buildings that are just vacated and, and not, not used, not used. And there's an absence of furnishings and they're just, you know, people can tell that, that, you know, it's just sitting there vacant and not being used. And so, you go through that section and then it talks about the obligations of owners and persons in control. And basically, this ordinance is creating a registry. We will go out and we will identify those buildings that are vacant, that are identified by, in this ordinance. We will make a listing of those, you know, once the registration, if this ordinance becomes effective, property owners are required, if they have a vacant building that falls in this category, to register that. But we know that that may not happen. We may know, you know, we know that there may be out-of-town property owners that will not be aware of it. So, we will notify these property owners. This ordinance does not go into effect immediately. It takes, it has a sixty-day window and that's just so we can get people on notice. We can let people know what's, what's happening and we can also explain to them the process and what's going, going on here. The registration section just talks about what we're going to need. There are exemptions. Again, we did not want to create something that was burdensome. And so, we, we created exemptions for a building that may be damaged by fire. We give them, you know, we're not going to make them register that as long as they're working to rehab the building and bring it back into productive use. There are exemptions if a vacant building is under active construction or renovation. Because again, just like the Greyhound bus station right now, you know, there's nobody occupying it right now because it's under construction. So, that's accepted and understood in this exemption. Also, governmental agencies are exempted from this section because at time to time, we're working on redevelopment projects and things. And so, we have buildings that may not be occupied at the time. You see in there, there's a fee structure. And with any fee, there's always the question of how did you arrive at that? Well, we, we tried to arrive at something that was fair, that was not overburdensome, but also that was there so that, you know, you want it to be there in case someone doesn't want to follow the process. You, you at least want to create a fee that is not just easier for them to pay the fee and continue in the state that they are. That's, you know, we're trying to accomplish a certain goal. So, you have to establish a fee structure. And I know there's always people that say, well, could it be less? Could it be more? And, you know, we've tried to find something that, that matched, you know, the administrative time and things that would be involved in carrying it out. And also something that would at least motivate people to, to register their building and to be motivated to carry the building to production, you know, to a productive state. But revenue is not the goal here. We do not put this in place so that we could find a new revenue stream. Because let me assure you, there's much easier ways to raise revenue. So, this is not a revenue stream creator. This is just a way to accomplish what we've been trying to accomplish for years is getting buildings in a productive state or getting people to, to get those properties in hands of people that want to do something. And, and also just to gain information, a lot of times, we have vacant buildings that we cannot find who's in charge, who's in control. And so, we've got a building sitting out there and it could be, vagrants could be moving in. There could be safety issues with it and finding somebody is really hard. So, so we want, this requires that in the registration, we get someone on record that we can contact whenever there's issues with the property. So, that's a, that's a big plus in this registration, too. It's not just to, to put people on a ledger. It's, it's to, to get people that we can contact if, if issues arise with buildings. You'll also see that there are three categories that buildings will fall into that are vacant. One would be those that are dilapidated and need to be demolished. And all we ask is that people give us a plan for that demolition. It needs to be not open-ended. It, it needs to have a timeframe and the, and the ordinance creates a timeframe of twelve months. So, if, if you're going to demolish something, we want it done in twelve months. And anybody can do that. That's legitimate, that's not a problem. But also, you know, there are some, some built into the ordinance. If, if someone needs to extend a period for circumstances that are beyond their control, we understand that and we can grant extensions as long as someone is making progress. There's also a category called secured buildings or, or putting the building in a secure state. And that's someone that doesn't necessarily have plans right now, but they have plans that they're moving toward. And so, we ask if they're going to not do anything right now, but they secure the building, that means that they secure it in a way that's not, creates the look of, that we're abandoning areas. So, you'll see in here that when you have vacant buildings, we don't want them boarding up the first floor. Nothing's, you know, more destructive and, and creates a negative impact than, than walking down the street and a building sitting there with boards on the windows and doors. That doesn't speak vitality and that doesn't speak to someone that wants to invest money. So, so we, we want them to, to put the building in, in a way, secure it in such a way that the building still looks like you could go in and, and do something with the building or that someone is doing that. We also have another category called rehabilitation. And that's where someone is renovating the building and we, we ask that they make progress. Building permits are usually only, you know, they're good for twelve months. So, it corresponds with that. It says if you've got an active permit, you need to be making progress with your rehabilitation plan. You know, it shouldn't take six, seven years to rehabilitate a building. So, so it makes, again, it, it puts thresholds in there so that people are making, you know, movement in, in creating these buildings and reaching a productivity level. But it doesn't create burdensome timeframes. It creates realistic timeframes. There's also inspections that occur when they register and when they renew so that we can keep track. Okay, they registered this year, next year we come, has the building been maintained? You know, is it dilapidating? Is, is, is it deteriorating further? You know, what do we need to do to help? And so, there are also maintenance standards in here for, for during the vacant period, maintaining the building and keeping it up. Because you don't want the building just deteriorating further. And, and we all know that buildings that are not used deteriorate faster, especially if you're not doing things like, there's no utility zone, there's no climate control. There's, you know, the, the buildings just deteriorate quicker. And so, we're trying to create a, a process by which we don't have vacant buildings just become demolished buildings. We want, we want these buildings to be used because that's the best way to, to use your resources, to use them. And so, some buildings reach the end of their life and they do need to be demolished. But a lot of times, buildings may not be at the end of their life, but because of disuse, they, they begin to, to reach that very quickly. So, this, this creates mechanisms for that. There's also a section for appeals. You know, if they don't like our decision, they can appeal our decision. And they can go to the border zoning appeals. And that's, that's with any order of the staff, planning staff. Or they can go to border zoning appeals if they don't like what we're saying. But in a nutshell, there are exemptions, there are fee reductions in here. If somebody has a building in, in good condition and they keep it in good condition, they can reduce their fee by fifty percent. So, we, we feel like this is reaching the, the appropriate balance point between having a fee structure, having a process, but creating exemptions where necessary, having a fee that can be reduced if they're in code compliance. And also, if they make the building productive in the twelve-month period that they pay their fee, we'll refund it completely. So, you know, I think, you see, our goal is, is not to, to regulate people to death. Our goal is to push buildings toward productivity. And, and that's, that's all we're doing. And we also, you know, some have asked, well, I see the stick part, but where's the carrot? And so, the carrot is, we have mechanisms in place if somebody is wanting to productively use a building, especially in the downtown area and the area surrounding. We have pilot program that gives them tax benefits if they're putting a building in productivity. We have other incentives through the CRA that we can help people reach productivity. So, we feel like the carrots are there. And, and those that are wanting to, to reach that productivity level and have a viable building, there are processes available for them and this will not be a burden to them. Because if people are doing the things they are supposed to be doing to make a building productive, then this will not create a burden for them. In fact, there'll be incentives and helps in, in, in getting that building to that point. So, again, that's a synopsis and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Hey, Stan.
Yes, sir.
The, if you can help me kind of clarify one thing on the registration fees, of the initial registration fee of four. The, if you can help me kind of clarify one thing on the registration fees of the initial registration fee of $400. And particularly when it comes to issuing a new building permit. Is that, if, if there's a project started in one of the zones, my understanding it, before the building permit is issued, there's a $400 registration fee. And then does that tie back into the refunding piece within a...
Well...
...year, or is that...
If you have, again, these are addressing vacant buildings. So, you know, if you have a, a vacant building that at the time at which they had to register and within that 12-month period that ends December 31st is what it talks about here. Because you're, you were, or if it's, at other times, if you have a building that goes vacant in the year, it'd be 12 months from that date. But in most cases, there's a, there's a date that you have to renew every year. But if a building is, is it vacant at the time you registered, but six months later, they have renovated the building and they have a tenant in it, then we'll refund that, that fee. If the building at the time of registration is in code compliance, then they pay 50% of that fee. They don't pay the 400, they pay 200. So, so it's, you know, there's, there's things in there for exemptions and reductions for those that are trying to make progress and it's, and you know that they're trying to make progress, you're not trying to create a burden for them.
And then I guess on just a practical note of, I think, if this were accepted, first reading, second reading, and then 60 days after that is when we would implement this. Do you feel confident kind of with the systems or, I guess, in your department or whatever departments we're seeing that we can actually register, inspect, enforce and kind of implement all of that? Or do we need to make different changes to actually pull this off?
I think the way I, that I look at things is, is, you know, we haven't had this ordinance before. So that we don't, we don't know all of what's gonna be created. We do know the, the logistical part of it. And we, we have our building department that's helping us, you know, with an inventory. We have our building department that'll help us with some of the inspections. And we also have our fire department with the fire marshal that helps us with the fire part of things. So, so it's not just the planning department. We're more the logistical department, which is what we do best is we, we will take the, we have the forms. We will, we will register people. And also as permits come, the permits route through our department. So we'll also be the, the agency that'll be looking at the permits so we can also tie that back to this registration. But initially, just identifying people and then notifying people, yes, there'll be some, but we do that every month. Every month we have a zoning, every month we have a public hearing, we notify people. So we have a good process for notifying. Now enforcement, you know, we have enforcement mechanisms already. We have enforcement through environmental court. We have appeals process, we already have that in place, the borders on appeals. So all these mechanisms are already in place. You know, we've been doing property maintenance thing through the building department for some time. This just kind of coalesces everything into a registration mechanism so that you can keep track of it. And that's the best thing because you know in your own life, I know in my life, three years can pass in you, in a blink and, and you look back and say, when was the last time I was over there? You know, it could, a year might have passed, you know, two years. And so this at least keeps a registry and it keeps it, it, if ever in our front of our minds so that we can track it. And it also creates a mechanism so that if we see that we're not accomplishing the goals that we want to accomplish, then maybe there's some other things that we need to do. Maybe there's some more helps that we can put in place to help people achieve productivity. And that, you know, that's what we'll be looking for is, is if we go into this and, and the, the inventory is not getting any smaller, then we want to evaluate that and say, okay, why is our inventory not getting any smaller? You know, is there, is there some other hurdle that we need to address? So, so again, I think all these things are works in progress. I think we've got the mechanism in place. If we see that there's other things that are needed, we can always implement them. But I don't like implementing something anticipating there's gonna be extra load. I like to go into things and see what the issues are gonna be. And if we have issues, then we can always address them then. And you'll be more inclined to, if I come to you and say I need some resources, if I've got a proven record of I need it, then you'll, you'll be more in a, in a frame to, to say, yeah, I see that. Than if I just said, well, I think we may get more than we can handle.
I, I think that's an important piece to this is the reporting of that. One thing that I would ask is that we could get semi-annual reporting on the number of buildings that we have, those that have been rehabilitated, those that have been demolished and the, the fees that we're taking in on that as well.
Yes, sir.
The, the administration of this, so I'm hearing from you that's gonna come through the building department partially, through the planning department partially, and then the fire department would have inspections as well.
Yes.
Seeing the, the workload, we, we had done a, a smaller scale analysis of this downtown a number of years ago. And the workload involved in that, I think, can be pretty heavy in the, in the front end. I think that will have some operating impacts on us. I'd like you guys to look at that and get back with the budget committee on how that may affect the, the operating budget for the, especially for the building department and the fire department as they will have to dedicate people and man-hours to go inspect those.
And we, and we, you know, some of these things, these activities that we're talking about are ongoing activities that we're doing on a day-to-day basis. The building department on a day-to-day basis, the housing department, out of the building department handles dilapidated buildings, handles buildings that are, you know, vacant. And so we're handling some of that already. Now, as we move into it, you may be right. We may see that there's, there's some additional things that we need to do to cover, maybe some additional activity in. But, but without knowing, you know, I, I don't want to just, just say that we're gonna need it. I, I would like to see where we are. And then if we see that we're needed, then we can always come to y'all and we've got a track record for why we feel like that's necessary.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Powell, good morning.
Good morning.
Just one vital question. What does this ordinance propose that the environmental court and the building department is not doing?
What does it propose that the environmental court and the building are not, not doing now?
Yeah, building department.
Well, the, the proactive side of it is that we're, we're requiring that property owners register those buildings. And, and that, if you ask Greg with the building department, he'll tell you that, that many times, the hardest part of their job is just finding somebody responsible. And so the registration process creates a mechanism where you have to give us information where we can contact somebody and we can identify who's in charge with a building that may have problems, a building that has got issues. And so that, to me, that's the, that's one of the number one proactive aspects of this ordinance is it will give us that registry. It also gives us the ability to track on a, on a, on a annual basis what status we're in. Because, or even semi-annually in, within the year if conditions change. But right now, sometimes there's no, we, we have a harder time tracking the status of a building and what's being done because somebody can go out there and, and do a little bit and we're not aware of it. And, and we may not see any progress and there may be some progress going on. So it at least gives us the ability to track that activity. Also, it will give us a pattern for what their plan is. And a lot of times, we don't know what that is. Somebody's got a building, they, they may be working on it, they may not be working on it. But we don't have a plan for what, what they're trying to achieve because it may be we can help them. It may be that they have a plan that's, that's runs counter to some other regulations. So it allows us to help them with that too, so that we're all on the same page. So the, the greatest aspect of this ordinance is information, which is, is half the battle sometimes is just getting the right information.
Mayor, if I may, Stan, I had some concerns about the notice requirements. You kind of discussed that as well as the impetus of, of this ordinance. As you know, this isn't something novel and new. Many cities have been doing this for, for several years now. What does make this a bit different is, and I want it on the record, is this is not residential. This is only commercial and industrial product, property, correct?
It would include multifamily because multifamily is considered commercial. So it would include triplex and above. So again, it, there are cities that have commercial industrial buildings. And this is not novel in that if you'll look in, within the ordinance, you'll see some dovetailing back to the property maintenance code for the building department because a lot of this is contained within their code now. This just bundles it in a, in a, in a frame that allows us to register and get information. So a lot of the authorities that you see, because someone asked me about that, well, aren't you trailblazing with something? Well, no, we're not trailblazing because these authorities already exist within our code now. We're just bundling it in such a way that we can now have responsible parties that we can contact where we have them give us information on what they're planning on doing and we can follow them on an annual basis. And yes, there is a little bit of incentive to go ahead and do something if they've been sitting on the fence, not wanting to do anything. So, so yes, there, there is that. But for the most part, it's not about creating a new regulatory mechanism and trying to create a new arm of the city. It's, it's using the existing process we have, but bundling that authority into a registry where we can get information.
Sure. And my second question, and I'm sure you have some idea, how many properties are we talking about?
Well, we're in the process of gathering that. We'll have that for you by second reading. We'll, we'll tell you exactly what we're talking about, but...
100, 200?
It could be in the range of 100, it could be less. It just depends because we're gonna have to kind of make some calls. Because when we're, when we're going out and doing a windows, windshield survey of vacant buildings, we may not be aware of what's going on with the building. Because one of the things in this ordinance is they'll have to show us how they're actively marking the building. While driving down the street and getting a listing of vacant buildings, we may not know if they're actively being marketed or not. So, so that initial list of vacancies may be dwindled, may be whittled down once we determine what state they're in. Because we'll have to determine what three states they're gonna be in, are they working toward demolition? And they just hadn't made any progress? Are they gonna be securing the building or are they gonna be rehabbing the building? So initially, we may have a big number, but then we may whittle that down once we get information.
And my, my last question, these are current property on, I mean, property taxpayers as well, right?
They are in some cases, some cases not.
Some not.
Some not. I mean, that, again, a lot of times, we don't, we have delinquent properties tax-wise. And they may, they may be in a situation where it's in an LLC that we can't determine who responsible parties are. So, so again, I think the, the key in all this is we will, we will get someone associated with the property. We'll get some idea of what they're planning on doing. And we'll, we'll get some, some mechanism where we can track their progress and make sure that we're moving toward productive buildings. If we, if they're not, then if they want to leave it in a, in a, in a secured state, they can. But we're just gonna require that they, they register each year and say they're doing that.
And we surely know our problems collecting delinquent property taxes, so.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
Well, one more.
Uh, okay.
Towards the percentage vacancy, has there been any consideration towards that? To give kind of an example, if you were to have 90% of a building that was occupied, 10% of it not occupied, would that be applicable towards a vacant property? Would that be considered a property within itself? Or would that be considered, or would that be prorated per the percentage vacancy?
Well, we've talked about that and that again, we could, we could add a percentage threshold in there if we wanted to between now and second reading, if you, if we felt like it clarified things better. Because again, I don't know that a 90% occupied building is gonna meet the test of it being a vacant building anyway. Because, because it just doesn't fall in that category. But, but, but again, to make clarity, we may, we could put in a threshold that just says if a building is, is, is 50% occupied and, and, you know, and as long as the other 50% is being actively marketed, then it wouldn't be considered, you know, vacant.
And to the carrot, to the carrot stick point, we have a lot of carrots downtown. Some of these sub-areas, I'm not sure if we have quite the same amount of carrots. I think that's something for us to look at in those redevelopment areas. I know there's stiff funds that are available for some infrastructural improvements. But, you know, the pilot program, to my knowledge, is, is a CRA. The bounds don't extend into some of these sub-areas. I think that's one of the things that we'll need to consider is to providing, maybe even allocating some of these, this, the revenue that would come in from this in order to be, to have some additional incentives.
The majority of the sub-areas that are contained in the civic master plan are also in our redevelopment areas. So the CRA does provide incentives with the monies that we have. We have provided incentive for commercial development in East Jackson and, and we still have funds left from that as long as they are eligible under HUD. In some of the, there's only, there's only like one area that's really outside of the redevelopment area. It's not covered by the redevelopment. So we can think about mechanisms that we might address there. But, you know, the pilot, you know, for the most part, the pilot corresponds with a, a lot of the downtown and, and adjacent area. You know, I don't know if it's something that could be expanded, if it's, if it's a redevelopment area, you know, the pilot would, would address that. That'd be something that the, you know, the downtown development corporation, the Jackson Revenue Finance Corporation could address. But, but yes, we always want to have a toolbox that is complete with, with not only tools, but also the, the incentives that, that, to help. Because I, I, I used to, in economics, they taught us, you know, in the tax code, every year, the tax code changes. And basically what the government does through tax code is, is modify behavior that they want to produce. In other words, if they want you to be a saver, they'll give you benefits through the tax code to make you save. Or if you, or if they want to encourage, you know, marriage, they'll give you marriage credits for our school. If they want adults to go back to school, they'll, they'll put credits. You know, the same way here is you, we want to make sure that we have the tools and incentives that produce the goal that we want to produce. And that is having viable buildings that are being utilized by people that are successful in, in Jackson. So, so as long as we're producing that, and, and I think what you said, having some, some reporting so that you can quantify if the, if the tool is accomplishing the job that you want it to do. If it's not, then we can tweak it. If it's, if we need other tools or we need other incentives, that we can talk about that too.
Any questions? This is an ordinance on first reading, so I will open the public comments. Anyone in favor of or in opposition to the ordinance, raise your hand to be recognized. Seeing none, close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, second?
Second.
Any other discussion from council? Council, please vote.
And the motion passes with seven members in favor, one abstaining and one voting no.
Anita, what did you record my vote as?
Did you abstain or did you vote?
No, I voted yes.
Okay, well then it's votes eight to one.
All right. I have made second readings, have a consideration of an ordinance to close and abandon a portion of Gin Street between Young Street and the west margin of North and South Railroads. Sound was approved on first reading. Any questions from council? Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item two is a consideration of an ordinance to close and abandon a portion of an alley that runs between Westwood Avenue, Campbell Street, Prospect Avenue and North Lake Drive. This is approved on first reading.
So moved.
Have a motion, there a second? Have a motion, a second, any discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item nine, new business.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Thank you, Stan.
Council, if you look at item two under new business, we're going to just remove that from the agenda. And once we get through with item one, if there's any questions on why we're removing that, we can have Bobby and Al come up and address that. But item one under new business is capital needs summary presented by Councilman Taylor. He's the chair of the city's budget committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to give everybody an update, on the 23rd of July, the, the council's budget committee met. We had some really good discussions about some policies and, and procedures that we need to put in place in order to, to make sure that we're meeting the expectations of the community and, and being fiscally responsible. One of the first tasks that we were ta, that we were given was to start looking at our capital expenses for FY '20. We opened that to the departments to submit those. Those were received and, and, and you can see, I've sat on your, in front of you, the, the, what I have referred to as my capital budget draft. This plan is a five-year plan. We have some reoccurring needs. And so where we started was we started meeting with some of our capital-heavy departments. Those would include the, the engineering department, the fire department, the police department. I'm starting to look at their capital needs, not only for this fiscal year, but for, but for five years out. I believe that we're gonna have to take a new approach where we're looking more long-term so that we can smooth our spending out over the next five years instead of lumping it on an as-needed basis. This, I, I, I believe will make us more efficient and, and... Um, this, I, I, I believe will make us more efficient and, and in turn, I've challenged the, the administration here, uh, to, uh, to start to tighten our belts on the operations side to free up some of that revenue that, uh, otherwise going, was going towards operating to now be, uh, allocated towards capital in future years. Uh, at the present, we are not at, uh, there are a lot of things that have to be adjusted over this year. Uh, we're going to need to borrow some money to, to make these capital needs. We had some significant requests, uh, from the fire department, uh, and from the, uh, from the engineering department as it pertains to, uh, fire trucks, uh, and other apparatus and, uh, and, and, um, and street resurfacing. Um, we had some money, uh, that we had allocated previously in a, in a, last year, one point three million roughly that was going to go towards street resurfacing. I'm proposing that we, in addition to that, we add two point six million to Scott's budget. Uh, that will allow us to tackle, uh, twenty-five percent of our grade one and two streets, uh, per year. And so, uh, Scott has done a great job of, uh, evaluating and collecting an inventory of the streets that we have. Um, he's rated those on a grade between one and ten, uh, and one being the lowest grade, ten being, uh, just freshly paved. And, uh, and so the goal is to start to tackle those from the bottom up. Uh, so if, if there are multiple streets in a certain area that need to be tackled, we'll be tackling those as per the grade and starting to knock those out, um, on a, on a, on a yearly basis. The, uh, the fire department, uh, Chief Samuels, uh, he's, he's been working towards and I think will be meeting soon here in the next, next month or so on a, a ten-year plan that he's putting together for the fire department. But we've discussed, uh, spreading his needs out because they are needs at the present over the next four years. Um, there's a couple of pumper trucks that are needed. Uh, I say a couple, there's three pumper trucks and, and an aerial vehicle that are needed, um, over the next four years. Uh, they're already at the end of, of, of their operating life and we're going to need to replace those as soon as possible. So this year, we have slated, uh, in this draft, uh, capital budget recommendation, um, for one of those pumper trucks to be purchased. And in the subsequent years, we'll purchase a pumper truck and/or a, uh, an aerial vehicle to meet the needs of the fire department. And in addition to that, we've gone into the, to both the fire department and the police department and, and had discussions with them about their ongoing, um, recurring needs. Uh, many of you may be aware that, uh, we have a certain life on much of their equipment that needs to be continually bought on either a five to seven-year basis. And so we've started mapping that out, uh, onto our fiscal capitals, uh, under our capital schedule as well. With all that said, you have this in front of you. Um, the budget committee, uh, made a request for proposal, uh, on the refunding, um, of some two thousand nine issued bonds. Uh, we, uh, had some unsolicited proposals that, that we used as kind of a benchmark and we've sent that back out for, for final proposals. Um, we should be getting, I'll let Al speak to that a little bit more. Well, I guess you won't be speaking to that, so...
We will be getting those proposals back on August twenty-first.
August the twenty-first.
For the next council meeting, September third, we will be coming to the council with a resolution for not only refunding, but new money and possibly restructuring.
And, and by that point, to tell you where we are in the vetting of this.
Al and/or Bobby could, y'all come to the microphone so we could... Bobby can get there a little quicker.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good mornings.
Uh, I think everyone's aware for some period of time, can y'all hear me? Does that work?
Yes.
For some period of time, the city, uh, has been evaluating a couple of different finance options that Mr. Taylor has, uh, referred to. Want, one to deal with, uh, existing debt of the city and has been discussed that would involve the possibility of, uh, refunding some of our current debt at a lower interest cost, thereby saving the, the city some money. Uh, possibly restructuring, uh, the terms of some of our current debt payments. I think everyone's aware that I believe for the next, beginning this year, for, and then the four subsequent years, we have a significant jump in our, uh, debt service requirements each year. Uh, we are looking at the possibility of maybe, uh, taking, uh, each one of those years and extending those out maybe one more year. Uh, that too would kind of level out, uh, some of the debt service load the next four or five years. Uh, another, um, initiative that will be evaluated is, uh, uh, current, you know, variable rates have been very, uh, kind to the city and to others. Uh, been very low for an extended period of time. Right now, we have, um, about a third of our debt is in variable rate debts. Um, there may be a possibility with interest rates, uh, so low now, maybe even dropping in the future, uh, that we might be able to convert some of that variable rate debt to fixed rate debt at this point in time, uh, thereby maybe eliminating some of the future interest rate risk when rates begin to rise. So several initiatives like that surrounding, uh, our existing debt. And then as been mentioned, uh, we have been evaluating, um, the issuance of new debt to, uh, to fund a, uh, capital budget amendment that I guess will be coming maybe next month or, uh, shortly. Uh, we originally were looking at a way to, to fast-track, uh, the new money issue, to have funds available for the capital budget. Uh, we've learned that might not be quite, uh, uh, as an important issue right now as we maybe originally thought it would be. And, uh, we were evaluating ways to do that. But what, what we've concluded and the reason that we've, uh, pulled the resolution that was on the agenda is it's going to be, uh, we want it to, to do these finance, address these finance issues in the most compliant as well as cost-efficient way that we can. So, uh, what we are now working toward is, uh, Mr. Lefoon stated, is possibly next month you might see a, uh, a comprehensive finance resolution that would address all of those issues, both the current debt and the new debt. And, uh, by doing one debt issue, we will be able to, uh, uh, make sure that we do that in the co, most cost-efficient manner and, uh, that we dot all the i's and cross all the t's in, uh, a compliant way as well. And really, uh, in terms of accessing the money, if, if we stay on track, uh, as, uh, Mr. Lefoon referred to, the RFP process is directed by the budget committee. That'll be wrapping up here in a couple of weeks. We can select our partner, you know, at, at, at that particular point, uh, bring the resolution next month. And hopefully by, um, I would say mid to late October, uh, be able to wrap up those finance initiatives, so...
Mr. Har, if I, if I may very quickly, I, I would just applaud, uh, the administration as well as the budget committee for, uh, taking this, uh, route. Uh, I believe, uh, I had mentioned in the budget meetings that I had some reservations that were moving kind of quickly, especially on the capital that we were trying to do now. And I think to come back to us, uh, with a more omnibus package that would, uh, get us on track for all of the things that we'd need to do is much more prudent.
Yeah, I, we, we feel that way too, uh, Councilman Brooks. And as Mr. Taylor alluded to, there are some, um, funds from a capital standpoint that have already been, uh, our carryover funds are, that are available to the city now. So, uh, any other questions? I'll be happy to, to address those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby.
Paul, the only, only thing I want to ask that, that you do when you meet with the fire department, uh, as we map out a long-range plan, I want to make sure that we look at some of the, uh, actual facilities such as fire stations that might need to be replaced because I know we have some that are pretty old. Uh, two, uh, two, at least two that come to mind. And I hope that we can develop a plan to, to include that because we ask those firefighters to come in and live there for twenty-four hours a day. And, uh, I think they ought to have good facilities, you know? And I think, you know, the sooner we could do it, the better in my opinion because the sooner we can build it now, if, if at all possible, or at least in the next couple of years, uh, it'll probably cost us less because every year that goes by, as you know, building cost will increase. And so we need to have good, uh, good facilities for those folks at the fire department.
Thank you.
Councilman Taylor?
That wraps it up.
All right. Taking item two off, item three is notification of JAG nineteen grant. Total grant is forty-three thousand ninety-five dollars, split equally between city and county with no match for the grant.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item four is creation of City of Jackson Anti-Poverty Task Force. I'll ask Lauren Kirk and Alex Reed to come, address the council about that.
Good morning, members of the council.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hey, what we have before you today, Ms. Kirk has put a lot of work into this on the initial goals and the candidates for the task force. One thing that really stuck out to me is fifty-five percent of African-American population in Jackson lives in poverty. That's something that we can't let go on like that and we've got to do something about it. And this task force will be the first step in it. It's not going to be a silver bullet, but we're starting the conversation.
Say that again.
I'm sorry?
Say that again.
Oh, I, I don't, I don't know if I can remember what all I said, but fifty-five...
No, 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 not, 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 just the statistic, not all of that editorial.
Fifty-five percent of the African-American population in Jackson live in poverty.
And that's based on? Pardon?
Census data.
Census, okay.
Yes, sir. That if y'all have any questions, we'll be glad to take them. I don't know the answers, I bet Lauren does.
No operating budget?
This will just be like our other commissions where it serves as voluntary unpaid, um, on a term basis that can be reappointed. I think we can evaluate in the future after making policy and program recommendations that need to be funded.
Move the approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Discussion, do we have the, uh, task force?
Next page.
Huh?
Next page.
Next page.
Yes, sir.
Because I had a recommendation.
We, uh, would love to add others on to you as we go on. This was just the initial...
Yeah, I had a recommendation though.
They may already be on there.
I don't see her on there.
Recommend it after me. Go ahead. Can you make a motion?
Have a motion in a second, any other discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you, members.
All right, item five is board appointments. And Jackson Recreation and Parks Board, reappointment of David Sykes.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Council, please vote.
And, Councilman Buchanan, are you voting? And the vote is unanimous.
I started to say like the late, uh, Mr. Westing said, I, I'll vote when I get ready. Mr. TCO, TCO.
Hey, Mayor, can you go through them all?
Yeah, can we take these collectively?
Absolutely. So take the rest of them, collective board appointments.
Take the rest of them, let's vote.
All right. You make, is that your motion?
Yes, sir, I'm making my motion.
A motion is second to accept the rest of the board appointments and reappointments. Any discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Cisco. Um, item six is the city council board appointments and liaison list. Uh, you have that before you.
Can we take those collectively as well?
Absolutely, yes. And is that, is that a motion?
It is.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
All right, item seven is consideration of invoices over ten thousand dollars.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Nothing else coming for the council? I, we're adjourned.